Greetings, everybody. The July 2, 2024, meeting of the Seattle City Council will come to order. It is 2:02 PM. I'm Sarah Nelson, President of the Council. Will the Clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Wu.
Present.
Councilmember Hollingsworth. Councilmember Kettle.
Here.
Councilmember Moore.
Present.
Councilmember Morales.
Here.
Councilmember Rivera.
Present.
Councilmember Saka.
Here.
Council President Nelson.
Present.
Seven present.
And Councilmember Hollingsworth just came in.
Thank you, here.
Thank you. So colleagues and members of the public, if there's no objection, and per request, I am going to request a break of 15 minutes because our Transportation Committee, Select Transportation Committee meeting ended just moments ago. And this will give folks a chance to get themselves together, have a bite, et cetera. So if there's no objection, the council meeting will go on to recess and reconvene at 2:18. That gives us 15 minutes. Hearing no objection, this meeting is now recessed until 2:18. Thank you very much. I believe they're live. Hello again, everybody. The July 2, 2024, City Council meeting will come back to order. Well, let's take the roll again, and then we will recommence.
Councilmember Wu. Councilmember Hollingsworth. Councilmember Kettle.
Here.
Councilmember Moore.
Present.
Councilmember Morales.
Here.
Councilmember Rivera. Councilmember Saka.
Here.
Council President Nelson.
Present.
And we, just hold on a second before you do the final count.
Mm-hmm.
Go ahead, Councilmembers.
Councilmember Wu.
Present.
Councilmember Hollingsworth.
Present, here.
Seven present.
Thank you very much. Okay, there is no presentation today, so colleagues, at this time, we'll open the hybrid public comment period. Madam Clerk, how many speakers are signed up today?
We have six in person and two remote.
Okay. As is our normal practice, I noticed that there is Commissioner, Port Commissioner Feldman, who has signed up to speak, so we will provide for him to speak first as an elected official, and then we'll proceed with our other online speaker, and then do all of the in-persons at once. Thank you.
The public comment period will be moderated in the following manner. Public comment period is up to 20 minutes. Speakers will be called in the order in which they are registered. Speakers will start with remote speakers and then move to in-person speakers. Speakers will hear a time when 10 seconds are left of their allotted time. Speakers' mics will be muted if they do not end their comments within that time to allow us to call on the next speaker. We'll begin with Commissioner Feldman.
And people will have two minutes to speak.
You may need to press star six in order to speak. Go ahead.
Thank you for allowing me to step in. Hey, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
All right, great. Thank you, Council President Nelson and Sustainability Chair Wu. I appreciate the ability to speak at the top of the meeting in support of Council Bill 120802. I'm Port of Seattle Commissioner Fred Telleman and a resident of District 6. The bill authorizes the Port of Seattle and the Seattle City Light to sign an MOA creating a joint shore power operating agreement to electrify Seattle's waterfront from Terminal 46, just south of the Coleman Dock to the cruise terminal at Pier 66. By generating over $900 million in economic activity, cruise is a significant driver to Seattle's downtown economic recovery. And I know many of you as council members and the mayor have been supportive of the industry's impact to Seattle, and we thank you for your support. However, we're also aware of the environmental impacts these ships can have on the city's air quality. This is why I champion the port's order to accelerate our climate sustainability goals to reduce greenhouse gas and air emissions by ensuring all cruise ships plug into Seattle's clean electrical grid by 2027. I'm proud to share that we are one of the first ports in the nation to require all cruise ships to have 100% shore power capable, be capable, and to require its use. The addition of shore power at Pier 66 will complete the electrification of all three cruise ship births at Seattle Harbor, putting Seattle amongst the first in the world to have such capabilities. This important work is also a result of successful collaboration with Seattle City Light and represents an early effort in the Port of Seattle's partnership with the city and the Northwest Seaport Alliance, who advanced the city waterfront clean energy strategy. This joint effort seeks to establish the enabling power infrastructure necessary to transition to clean energy across the port's maritime operations, almost there, on the path to a zero-carbon future. Through this MOA, cruise ships will be able to shut down their main engines and reduce carbon emissions by 4,500 metric tons per year at 66. It also includes the city's investments to ensure that you also have access to power enabling you to meet your own climate goals. We appreciate our ongoing partnership with the city and look forward to the ribbon-cutting for the Pier 66 Shore Power Project later this fall. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Alberto Alvarez.
The nationwide trend has been in support of fair living wages and rights for workers across all gig services. A California federal court passed judgment against Uber, who sued and lobbied against the rights of workers. In Minnesota, this May, they raised the wages of gig drivers, the minimum wage. Massachusetts just passed a $32 minimum wage plus rights and benefits for drivers. The foundation of all these trends comes from the passage of laws like pay-up in Seattle, in addition to laws passed in New York and Prop 22 in California. The strength of the workforce across this many cities and states has earned a fair wage that accounts for expenses. These protections grant dignity, safety, and a level playing field. Please vote down CB 120775. Uphold the Seattle pay-up law. Thank you, council, and have a great Fourth of July, and I yield my time.
We want to move into the in-person public comment. I'm going to read the first three names. If you can, please start lining up to the podiums. The first is Jason Agulink, and then Arianna Riley and Alex Zimmerman.
This past seven-day period was financially more successful than most weeks, even though I averaged less than $13 an hour before work-related expenses. We all know how expensive Seattle is, and I realize it may be difficult for some people to understand what it's like to work a ridiculous amount of hours and scrap together about $25,000 a year, when $200,000 is the common salary in the city. The volume of orders is very low. The answer is to revise the current law so restaurants and couriers have more opportunities to earn a dignified wage. The complete silence from City Council for the past five weeks out there to vote postponement is just disrespectful. Are any steps being done to move a solution forward? Please let us know.
Good afternoon. My name's Arianna Riley. I'm a delivery driver and resident of West Seattle. It's been quite wonderful being able to afford car repairs recently. And if I can afford car repairs, then that means more business for the mechanic who can use that money to pay his bills. A rising tide lifts all boats. Today, I'm here to talk about grocery shopping. We were really surprised to hear the Grocery Association come out against the pay-up law because I'm not sure if they understand how much more grocery stores and markets are making due to this law. DoorDash and Uber have allowed people to order from stores such as Safeway, starting in some areas in 2020 and expanding from there. But before this law, there were almost no drivers that were willing to do grocery orders on DoorDash and Uber because they did not pay well and took more time than restaurant pickups. If no drivers are willing to take orders, then the orders get canceled and no one got paid, not DoorDash, not stores, and customers didn't get their groceries. Since the pay-up law went into effect, this has changed. Grocery orders are now worth our time as drivers since we're paid for the time spent on orders. Many drivers take shopping orders now, and groceries are booming on both DoorDash and Uber. Safeway in the Alaska Junction told another driver that they can recognize 70 to 80 regular shoppers on a daily basis between DoorDash, Uber, and Instacart. We are not seeing that this is an either-or change. Customers that order groceries one night are the same customers that ordered delivery from a restaurant the previous night. DoorDash and Uber have only been able to expand their grocery business in Seattle because of pay-up, and local chains such as PCC and Met Market have been profiting off of the many orders they suddenly receive on a daily basis. Please keep pay-up in place, and also I'd like to wish everybody a happy and safe Fourth of July. Thank you.
Following Arianna's, Alex Zimmerman, then Bennett Hassleton, and David Haynes. Arianna. Oh, sorry, after Arianna. She respoke, yes. So it is then it's Alex Zimmerman. Mr. Zimmerman? You're next. Follow Mr. Zimmerman, then Bennett. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I very appreciate you. Yeah. Zhihai, my lovely council. You're best people what as I know. You're very good Fuhrer. This is very important because my analogy to Hitler, you know what it means, he very good Fuhrer too. You probably better than Hitler with Nazi in Germany, yeah. Right now, I want to explain something, what is I thinking, you all totally sick. And I talking about this.
Stop, please. Direct your comments to something on the agenda or within the council's purview, and no abusive language.
Okay, agenda, agenda, no problem. Agenda number two is about low housing. This make me absolutely sick, you know what it means, because I know this business like my Feuerger. 30 years ago, I bring first-class action in state Washington for low-income housing, you know, and I win. What is I hear here, you know what it means? It's a nightmare. Council, what else, you know what it means, have a group of people who work for government, for your city, and they bring plan how make us life with housing better. It's a pure 100% is BS. I know this. I'm expert in this situation. Nothing will be changed. I give you only one example, what as I told you before. Seattle Times, year ago, put information, 25,000 apartment staying empty for years. 25,000. You did something about this? Nothing. I told you doing something. They posted be paid because they use us money alone. Give them something like penalty, $1 per day. Very nice penalty, you know what it means? You want keep this apartment empty for 10 years? No problem. Guys, this apartment cost from $25,000 to $5,000 bucks. You need to understand this problem. You're doing nothing. Why you doing here, huh? You freaking zero, you know what it means? You impotent. 100%. Stand up, America. Game is over. We will make America great again. Thank you very much, my lovely council.
We have Bennett Hassleton, and David Haynes, and Kathleen Brows.
Which mic? This one? Okay. Hi. So as part of continuing to promote what I think is healthy skepticism of the police, I wanted to play another video of a protester arrest. This is from a while ago, from a protest in Everett, where there's a protester who was dangling a donut on the end of a string being held by a stick. Just for context, you're watching the video, the man he's, the man in the background with a polo shirt and wearing a cap, that's an off-duty police officer. It's not obvious. And also, the kid, he's talking to a group that's off in the distance. He's not addressing the officers that are standing next to him. They're about, like, this far away from him. So let me, oh crap. Come on. Okay, here we go. Oh, I pressed the wrong thing. Again, sorry for the language being used by the police officer.
Hey, any of you bootlickers about this?
Get that fucking shit away from my face, or we'll...
Hey!
You know?
Come on, that's what happened.
Get the fuck away. Pew, if you shit out.
What?
Ooh, hey, you got that?
I got it.
All right, so this video, like, rocketed around the world because everyone thought, oh, how hilarious, you know, police officer attacks protester to take his donut. But it's, in a way, it's not really a laughing matter, because later I pulled from the file the statements that the other officers made about what happened. Why don't you listen to what they said? Lieutenant Morris, to avoid being jabbed with a stick in the face, backed up against the retaining wall and was not able to move any further. That's, that's not what happened. And again, this was a statement filed by a police officer.
two full shifts, because, and maybe an investigation on how much money is being paid to the worker compared to the non-working shareholder middleman, because a lot of these shifts are not fully staffed, and the workers have to slow down to make ends meet throughout the year. And there's too much greed within the public-private partnerships that are not being kept honest because the worker is the only one doing the workers, and they're getting the least amount of money, and they're forced to pay the tax base paycheck to paycheck. And it just seems like we could get some things done if we had a more like robust labor force. The thing I'm concerned about is the council seems to keep signing off on the same progressive policies that the previous council is still dumping on this council and trying to get away with the same racist woke hypocrisies that are exacerbating public safety and the homeless crisis. And, you know, it'd be great if you guys could purge some of the bad policies of the past and realize that you cannot destroy somebody else's life pushing drugs and be considered nonviolent, low-level misdemeanor, exempted from jail. But yet, we have a mayor who's still running interference for his criminal underworld friends that he bragged about during the campaign, and he has sabotaged the integrity of the police efforts, including some others. And we need a better leadership to keep the city honest. But shutting down the drug pushers, I would say, is very important. Hopefully, you guys can get some double shifts on some of the work progress around here.
Our last, oh, excuse me, we have Kathleen Bros.
Good afternoon, counsel. My name is Kathleen Bros, and I live in District 6. This message is for Mayor Harrell. I've sent him a couple messages, and I've asked for a response, but I haven't received it. So it is time, Mayor Harrell, it is time for you to demand that all City of Seattle employees, funded by the taxpayers, return to work downtown. City staff will be more productive in the office. The public sector has returned to work. Now it is time for government employees to do the same. And one more thing today. Last Friday, the U.S. Supreme Court ruled that people living unhoused on our streets can be forced into shelter, whether they want to or not. Now is the chance to clean up our city, specifically our downtown core. We need, we need to have, we need created a FEMA-like center where individuals are assessed and guided into addiction treatment, mental health facilities, and family reunification services. Some individuals, unfortunately, will need to be involuntarily incarcerated where they can receive these same services. Downtown Seattle cannot recover until we address the addicted and mentally ill living on our streets. The Seattle City Council must have the will to move forward and start healing our city before businesses and people feel secure returning downtown. Thank you.
Our last in-person speaker is Timothy Kitchen.
Hey, can you hear me? Hi, everyone. I'm Timothy Kitchen. I just scootered here and had this for safety because it's safer that way. Hi, Mr. Rivera, thank you for coming to our Monday Free My Neighborhood Council meeting. I'm here to speak in support of increased Seattle transportation levy. I personally would support a $1.9 billion transportation levy. Last year, there was a lot of, public safety was a really high prevalent issue, and I personally think that, especially in the last few weeks, we've had a lot of people dying on the roads and pedestrian and traffic safety, that this is a really direct way to literally save lives. There is nothing more important than human life, and this is, to me, a very direct path towards doing that. Just wrote a few notes here. Sorry, I'm a little out of breath. What hasten to communicate here, I canceled a dentist appointment. Last night, we had a death on Aurora, I believe it was around 40th, and so that was another traffic fatality. I've looked at recent polling that supports a $1.9 billion transportation levy. I believe it had 54% support. It was through the Northwest Progressive Institute, through Change Research. So I think a $1.7 billion would be supported majority, and when, if you were interested in running for reelection, if anyone asks you, or just in general, the reason to vote for this is to keep people alive, and then you can support, point towards specifically how that occurs. For example, protected bike lanes, protected pedestrian safety lanes. Let's see. Okay, I think that's, I think I got it all. Thank you again for having public comments, and I really, really highly support a 1.0, well, just 1.7 billion. I think that splits the difference, and I think you will have solid majority support in Seattle for that. So thank you for your time.
That was our last speaker.
Thank you very much, and thank you for coming and giving public comments, sir, instead of going to the dentist. So, all right, we've reached the end of our public comment period, so I'm now formally closing public comment, and we'll move on to the approval of the introduction and referral calendar. I'll first note that I wasn't able to provide, preside over council briefings yesterday. Thank you very much, Councilmember Saka, for filling in as President Pro Tem. So I don't know if, as, if the items on the internet, the IRC were listed, as I usually do on Monday, so in case anyone wasn't able to review the draft IRC, it includes the weekly bill payment ordinance and ordinance extending interim floodplain regulations, three appointments to the Equitable Development Initiative Advisory Board, and ordinance authorizing Seattle Public Utilities to execute an agreement regarding floodplain control in South Park, and an updated version of an ordinance relating to street racing. So if there's no objection, the introduction and referral calendar will be adopted. Hearing no objection, the introduction and referral calendar is adopted. And if there's no objection, the agenda will be adopted. Hearing none, the agenda is adopted. We'll now consider the proposed consent calendar. The items on the consent calendar are the minutes of June 25, 2024, Council Bill 120805, payment of the bills, and five appointments from the Housing and Human Services Committee. Are there any items that council members would like to remove from today's consent calendar? Seeing none, I move to adopt the consent calendar. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you very much. It's been moved and seconded to adopt the consent calendar, and will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Wu?
Yes.
Councilmember Hollingsworth?
Yes.
Councilmember Kettle?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Morales?
Yes.
Councilmember Rivera?
Aye.
Councilmember Saka?
Aye.
Council President Nelson?
Aye.
Eight in favor, none opposed.
It's been, the consent calendar items are adopted. Will the clerk please affix my signature to the minutes and the, and the legislation on the consent calendar on my behalf? Thank you very much. Okay, will the clerk please read item one into the record?
The report of the Public Safety Agent, Dieton Number One, Appointment 2896, reappearance of Lisa Ellis and Judge as Inspector General for a term to December 31, 2030. The committee recommends that the appointment be confirmed.
All right, Councilmember Kettle is Chair of this committee. You're recognized to address this item, and then when we're finished with the vote, we can have the Inspector General come up and say a few words. Go ahead, please.
All right, thank you, Council President. I really appreciate it, and I really appreciate this opportunity to speak on the reappearance of Lisa Judge as Inspector General for, for another term as Inspector General. And one of the first things I wanted to note is that our accountability system is crucial, and it is crucial for so many different reasons, and we just seen with the recent passage of the ALPR, the Automatic License Plate Reader bill, that, you know, having the accountability system there is our, you know, protection, if you will, our safety net, whatever kind of term you want to use, it really highlights the value of what the system brings, in addition to all the other pieces, what came from its creation. We've been engaged quite a bit from a Public Safety Committee perspective. We had all the accountability partners, OIG, OPA, and CPC with us in our second committee, showing, highlighting the importance of the accountability partners. We had Inspector General Judge back for our Use of Force briefing to the committee, and I should note that the three, including Inspector General Judge, is going to be joining us at our next committee meeting for our mid-year review. And again, this is really important to have this engagement from a committee perspective, but then also council with our accountability partners. But it's much more than giving a briefing at a committee meeting. There is a lot of collaboration that's going on, work that happens within the accountability partners, but also between the committee and the OIG, the OPA, SPD, and others. This is important work to work the issues that are facing our public safety posture, the things that are facing, you know, the issues related to accountability, to ensure that these pieces are, are put in place and then moving forward. I've seen this up close and personal with my meetings with, with the group, to include Inspector General Judge and my staff as well. So this is something that I've been seeing over the course of the six months directly as, as Chair of the Public Safety Committee. I wanted to highlight, too, as you know, in terms of the packet, there's two letters from the accountability partners, and OPA Director, Officer Police Accountability Director, Gino Betts noted, first, as required by legislation, by law, that we have to have this input. That's another piece of the accountability, you know, to ensure the, you know, the contact points, the input is received across the board. And he noted that, "Since I joined OPA in August 22, IG Judge has proven to be a committed and innovative partner." Later, he said, "Moreover, IG Judge is a proven asset in ensuring high-quality OPA investigations and decision-making." And going on in terms of the work that OIG does with the OPA, and in terms of the outcomes for OPA, noted that "These outstanding outcomes are a direct reflection of IG Judge's work ethic and leadership, and should install confidence in her reappearance." Further, the CPC, which is the Executive Director, Kelly, Colley Ellis, plus the, you know, the Commission Chairs, Reverend Hunter and Reverend Walden, and then co-chair Joel Merkel, noted that CPC is pleased with the progress, recent progress from OIG in improving its relationship with the Commission, and noting that OIG seeks input to next year's work plan from all accountability partners, to include the CPC, and that Inspector General Judge has been to CPC many times, both directly in terms of the, the meetings, but also directly her and her staff working directly with CPC and their staff on the issues that are before them. So this related to the OIG work plan and the status of CPC's contribution to that work plan. CPC noted that it's grateful that the OIG plans to work on different issues, to include, highlighted in the letter, the 911 Dispatch Center. But bottom line is, the OIG is also recently engaged with CPC on the hiring process, which goes to what I was just mentioning, engaging on a direct basis for critical staffing roles, which has been beneficial to the CPC. And moving forward, the CPC and the Executive Director, Dr. Colley Ellis, is looking forward to engaging with the Inspector General for Public Safety, Lisa Judge, and we look forward to a more robust relationship with the OIG, where we can jointly support each other's roles in the accountability system. One thing I wanted to highlight, too, just to kind of close, is the fact that we, we still are under a consent decree, and this consent decree has been crucial. It's been crucial in terms of reforms with SPD, the Seattle Police Department, moving on the reforms regarding the accountability system, and it's something that, you know, something that we should be proud of as we move forward in terms of, you know, our constitutional policing. And, and related to the consent decree is also the federal monitor. One of the things I wanted to highlight is this work is, you know, central in terms of the constitutional policing, but then also the federal monitor is part of this process and is key. And it's important to note that the federal monitor, as we move to go beyond the consent decree, as we work to complete the consent decree, the functions of the federal monitor will transition to the OIG. And so it's really important to have that stability and, you know, the professionalism and everything else that has been generated during the start of the OIG and for it to move forward, and to give that confidence in the system as, as we deal with issues that will no doubt pop up as we move forward. So with that, I would ask for your support in the reappearance of Inspector General Lisa Judge for another term. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Public Safety Chair Kettle, are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Councilmember Saka?
Thank you, Madam Council President. Thank you, Chair Kettle, for your, for your wise words and comments there, and honored to be able to support Inspector General Judge today, and I appreciate her thoughtful engagement and partnership with me in my office over these first six months, and plenty more work ahead, and I'm looking forward to doing that alongside you. And, and also appreciate your guidance and wisdom on helping me better understand, you know, the, the challenge with implementation that we have here within Seattle sometimes, and also better unravel a broader system-wide, statewide challenge with respect to the youth right to counsel, state bill. And we'll continue to seek your, your advice on that and, and ways to potentially clean that up, because colleagues, as we know, you know, this, this bill, the state bill, really frustrated the ability of law enforcement to investigate non, at the time, noncriminal suspects, and, you know, directly resulted in 15-year-old Mubarak Adam, his family not having the answers that they so desperately need and deserve after he was killed. And situations like that are occurring across the city and across the state, and learned last Wednesday evening during the Elkhai Harbor Avenue Community Safety Forum that I convened, heard directly from SPD Interim Chief Roar, that the same underlying issue is, is happening, has happened at Garfield High School during the shooting that they recently had a few weeks back. I don't know if that was the purpose and goal or intent of the, the, the legislation. I'm not a, I'm not an author of that, but there, there is an opportunity to, to better clarify when law enforcement can engage noncriminal suspects. And, and so otherwise, that same thing is going to happen over and over and over and over again. So that, I mean, personally, that'll be one of my highest priorities at the next legislative session, to get that additional clarification added, and, you know, I see Deputy Mayor Burgess is here as well. I hope the, the mayor joins me in that as, as a priority, because oddly enough, something that was designed to protect and benefit Black and Brown people, immigrants and refugees, is, is having the exact opposite effect in practice. So I raise that as a specific example of the important work that you, you do, though, you and your, your team do, and excited to be able to support you in this nomination and, and continue to partner together going forward. The stakes are too high, so thank you.
I'm looking around for other folks that might want to speak. Well, I will just say thank you very much, Inspector Judge, for all of your work so far, and you and I have had an opportunity to collaborate offline on different things that, especially around the surveillance impact reports, when that was under my purview, and it's good to hear from the, from the Public Safety Chair Kettle that, that there are supportive letters from the other two legs of our accountability stool, three-legged stool, so thank you very much for bringing that to the public's attention. I'm sorry that I wasn't in the public safety meeting last week to, to cast my vote, so thank you very much. I'll let you close us out before we head for a vote.
Council President, again, I just want to say thank you. I want to say thank you for Inspector Judge's, General Judge's service, public service, something that's often said to military, but it's something that should be said to our civilian counterparts, and, and for, for the work that they do, particularly in such an important area as police accountability.
Thank you. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Wu?
Yes.
Councilmember Hollingsworth?
Yes.
Councilmember Kettle?
having the exact opposite effect in practice. So I raise that as a specific example of the important work that you do though, you and your team do, and excited to be able to support you in this nomination and continue to partner together going forward. The stakes are too high, so thank you.
I'm looking around for other folks that might want to speak. Well, I will just say thank you very much, Inspector Judge, for all of your work so far. And you and I have had an opportunity to collaborate offline on different things that, especially around the Surveillance Impact Reports, when that was under my purview. And it's good to hear from the Public Safety Chair Kettle that there are supportive letters from the other two legs of our accountability stool, three-legged stool. So thank you very much for bringing that to the public's attention. I'm sorry that I wasn't in the Public Safety Meeting last week to cast my vote. So thank you very much. I'll let you close us out before we head for a vote.
Council President, again, I just want to say thank you. I want to say thank you for Inspector Judge's, General Judge's service, public service, something that's often said to military, but it's something that should be said to our civilian counterparts, and for the work that they do, particularly in such an important area as police accountability.
Thank you. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Wu?
Yes.
Councilmember Hollingsworth?
Yes.
Councilmember Kettle?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Morales?
Yes.
Councilmember Rivera?
Aye.
Councilmember Saka?
Aye.
Council President Nelson?
Aye.
Eight in favor, none opposed.
All right, the appointment passes, and congratulations, Inspector General Judge. Please come up, and I invite you to offer some words. And just to be sure, I will say, if there is no objection, the rules will be suspended to allow this, but I'm sure we're all looking forward to what you've got to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Saka, Councilmember Kettle, thank you for those words. I really appreciate that, and I have enjoyed our partnership so far. Council President, council members, thank you for vesting your trust and confidence in me and the team I've created at OIG with a second term and an opportunity to continue the important work that we have in progress. I value the partnership with you as the elected representatives of our community and their interests, and I look forward to a fruitful collaboration in ensuring our police department provides professional, constitutional, and effective policing services to our community. The City of Seattle is unique in its strong commitment to public safety, and especially for me, I appreciate the deep commitment to oversight of our public safety systems. Indeed, we have built a system that's a model. Other cities are now looking to create oversight with inspectors general, and the City of Seattle is often touted as an effective example of OIG offices in the police oversight realm. We've built a system that is ready to emerge from consent decree oversight, also an accomplishment that serves as a model for other cities. I truly value the commitment all of you demonstrate to our accountability system, and I am grateful for your support of OIG and our oversight services. I want to acknowledge and appreciate my amazing team at OIG. I'm often struck by how fortunate I am to be surrounded with so many brilliant, hardworking, and truly lovely people. It's an office I look forward to coming to, and the staff are a true pleasure to work with. I have absolute confidence in their work, vision, and dedication to our mission of community-centered oversight. I would not be here before you today without their remarkable work that's built trust and confidence in OIG. I want to acknowledge the partnership of SPD and their willingness to collaborate and continue on the path of self-critique and improvement. The proactive work OIG's done with SPD in the areas of traffic safety, crisis, crowd management, and effective interviewing, just to name a few issues, would not have been possible without, with a less willing and committed partner. The Seattle community is highly engaged in policing issues and deserves a system that is responsive to their concerns and welcoming of their input. I value the contributions community members and stakeholders have made to OIG work, and will continue to seek partnerships with community to ensure that their concerns and perspectives inform our efforts. And finally, with all those acknowledgements of contributions to our success, I want to also talk about the work that we have ahead. It's going to require all of us to really come together and pull in the same direction from issues like selecting a new police chief, transitioning away from federal oversight, working on equity and internal accountability within SPD, as well as internally at OIG, making sure that we have appropriate quality assurance protocols, that we remain transparent, and that we continue to work effectively with our partners, OPA and CPC, as well as our community stakeholders, to make sure that our work is responsive. I'm excited to continue on this path, and I'm grateful for the opportunity to continue my work for the community of Seattle. Thank you very much for your vote and for your confidence in our work. Have a great holiday.
Thank you. Okay, thank you very much, everybody. Will the clerk please read item two into the record?
Agenda item two, Council Bill 120804, relating to housing for low-income households, adopting the 2023 Seattle Housing Levy Administrative and Financial Plan for Program Years 2024 through 2026, adopting housing funding policies for the 2023 Seattle Housing Levy and further fund sources. Committee recommends the bill passes amended.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Moore, you're Chair of this committee, so I'm going to provide you the opportunity to give the committee report. I did notice, as I was looking at the agenda, that there is an error in the vote count in favor. It does list me, and I was not present at the last meeting, so that will be corrected in the record going forward. I had just assumed that everything was fine on the amendments that I suggested were brought forward in the final, and that you're going to talk about the whole thing. So, but that's just for the record that I note that. Go ahead, please.
Okay, thank you very much, Council President. So Council Bill 120804 adopts the 2023 Levy's Housing and Administrative, sorry, the Housing Levy's Administrative and Financial Plan and the Housing Funding Policies. So basically guides the expenditure of the 2023 Housing Levy. I would note that we had a good discussion and collaborative effort on making a few amendments to the plan. And the final plan that we passed out leverages the interest earnings from levy funds to increase investments in the homelessness prevention program, which has an additional emphasis on rental assistance. We also thank you, Council President, adds a new objective and priority for the rental production program for housing that supports those who are recovering from substance use disorders. It also, thank you to Councilmember Saka, adds housing priorities for people who were formerly served by the foster care system, as well as U.S. veterans. And it does improve reporting about vacancies and affordable housing buildings. So it did pass out of committee unanimously, and I would ask for your support of it here today. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's see, are there any other comments that people would like to make on this legislation? Councilmember Saka?
Thank you, Madam Council President, and thank you, Chair Moore. Just want to say thank you for your leadership on the committee and making this bill, shaping it, and making it even better. I am honored to support it, even if it didn't have my amendment in it, but it does. And so again, thank you for your strong leadership in driving a collaborative process here. This is really impactful, a really impactful piece of legislation, as you appropriately noted during committee last week, so thank you. And also, a minor clarification point as well on my amendment. It's a minor but subtle distinction, but it is intentional, and it does matter. So I sort of use generic, you know, language to describe what my bill does in terms of like, oh, it covers and it adds. Not the list, but, you know, one group to consider now is veterans. Shorthand, that's true, but it does use very precise language, saying, you know, former U.S. military personnel or something to that effect. That is a very intentional policy decision that I made when crafting this bill. The reason is, the term veteran is a very, is a very specific statutorily defined term that is reserved for those by law who have served, were honorably discharged from the United States Armed Forces, and, you know, there are certain other conditions, but honorably discharged is one of the key elements of that. And so, you know, but there are people who have chosen to serve our country for one reason or another, they weren't honorably discharged. And so that is why I made that choice to include that language, as opposed to the more very specific, much more narrower statutory definition of veteran. So, name it, minor thing, but again, kudos again. Thank you, Chair Moore, for your leadership in making this bill better. It's great.
Okay, I don't see any other comments, so if you would like to close us out before the vote, go ahead.
Okay, well, thank you very much, Chair Saka, for that clarification. I was unaware of that distinction, and so I really appreciate being educated about that, and it makes me even happier that we passed your, we were able to incorporate your amendments into the bill. So, because as you point out, there are various reasons that people are dishonorably discharged, and yet, and some of them are because of PTSD in that process. And so it is very much important that we provide for them. So thank you for that, in making it a better bill. Again, thank you, everyone, for your support.
All right, will the clerk please call the roll on item two?
Councilmember Wu?
Yes.
Councilmember Hollingsworth?
Yes.
Councilmember Kettle?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Morales?
Yes.
Councilmember Rivera?
Aye.
Councilmember Saka?
Aye.
Council President Nelson?
Aye.
Eight in favor, none opposed.
Great, the motion carries, and the Chair will sign the legislation. Thank you very much. Let's move on to item three.
Council President, if you don't mind just providing us permission on your behalf to add your signature to the legislation, thank you.
Okey-dokey. I will say, I'm just trying to find that, the bill passes and the Chair will sign it. Will the clerk please affix my signature to the legislation on my behalf?
Thank you.
All right. Okay, will the clerk please read the short title of item three into the record?
The report of the Parks Public Utilities and Technology Committee, Agenda Item Three, Council Bill 120800, relating to current use taxation, improving the application for current use taxation at property located at 4613 South Lucille Street. The committee recommends the bill pass.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Hollingsworth. This is, as Chair of the committee, you're recognized to provide the committee report.
Thank you, Council President Nelson, colleagues. This passed, three in favor, none opposed. This is, I'm going to read directly from the fiscal note and summary. This bill would shift the tax burden from the property to all other properties in Seattle. The effect of any particular property would be minimal. This is reducing the property tax burden for the Hillman City P patch that will help maintain the property as a publicly accessible open space for long-term neighborhood that has, it's District Two, Hillman City. Basically, this is a property that's been ran by Hillman City P patch. It grows local food, and I've always said this before in meetings before, anything south of, it's a technical bill, anything south of I-90, there's only one food bank, one of my favorites, Rainier Valley Food Bank. And I know that they just got a renovation, and they'll hopefully start looking like the Ballard Food Bank, which is absolutely phenomenal. And so a lot of the food that is grown in a lot of these P patches, especially at Hillman City, are for the local community and also shared with a lot of the food banks in the area. So would love everyone's support on this, and we'll more than happy to take any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any comments from my colleagues? All right, seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll on item three?
Councilmember Wu?
Yes.
Councilmember Hollingsworth?
Yes.
Councilmember Kettle?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Morales?
Yes.
Councilmember Rivera?
Aye.
Councilmember Saka?
Aye.
Council President Nelson?
Aye.
Eight in favor, none opposed.
Okay, the bill passes and the Chair will sign it. Will the clerk please affix my signature to the legislation on my behalf? Thank you. And then finally, I believe this is our last item, item four. Will the clerk please read the short title of item four into the record?
The report of the Sustainability City Lights Arts and Culture Committee, Agenda Item Four, Council Bill 120802, relating to the City Light Department authorizing execution of a two-year agreement with the Port of Seattle for the construction of system improvements associated with Terminal 46 and the Pier 66 shore power projects and negotiations and execution of an operations agreement. The committee recommends the bill pass.
Thank you. Councilmember Wu is Chair of the committee. You're recognized to provide the committee report.
Thank you, Council President Nelson. So I want to thank Port Commissioner Fred Feldman for their public safety, their public comments today. In addition to Commissioner Feldman's comments, I want to add that, you know, as was stated, this legislation authorizes Seattle City Light enter into a two-year agreement with the Port of Seattle to construct and provide shore power to Pier 66, which is where our cruise ship berths are, berth is where they dock. This will also authorize the city to execute a 30-year operations agreement between Seattle City Light and the Port of Seattle, and allow the cruise ships to plug into local electrical grid while turning off their diesel-powered engines when vessels are moored. So each connected ship will reduce their diesel emissions by 80% and CO2 emissions by 66%. And as Commissioner Feldman also mentioned, the joint partnership makes Seattle the first cruise port offering shore power to all three cruise berths on Seattle's waterfront. It accomplishes many clean air and energy goals to eliminate emissions from Seattle's waterfront as we transition from, as we transition the local maritime industry to clean and reliable energy. And I thank you in advance for your support.
Thank you for leading on this, Councilmember Wu. I have to say, I attended the opening day of Alaska Cruise Season, not this year, but last year, and I remember conversation about this, and this really is a big deal, that we are providing for this, this piece of infrastructure, with, of course, the port's cooperation. It does set our port apart amongst others on the West Coast. Thank you very much for leading on this, and also thank you, City Light and the port. Are there any other comments? Councilmember Kettle?
Thank you, Council President, and thank you, Chair Wu. I appreciate this, even though I do not sit on the committee. As a former naval officer, but also District Seven representative, I've long felt that it's really, you know, needed to have a strong reset of our relationship between the city and the port, and this goes a long way of doing that. You know, ultimately, as I've said many times, we were a port city 100 years ago. We're going to be a port city 100 years from now, and we have to ensure the viability of our port. We have to ensure that we are available for the city, but also for the region. Because, you know, 100 years from now, we're on the Bicentennial on 2111. International trade will still be maritime trade, and Seattle is well-positioned, and not just Seattle, the region, and for to take advantage of that and adjust as, you know, industries and, you know, come and go, as it's happened over the centuries, and will be well-positioned. And this also goes to the point that, you know, like in the transportation levy, part of that viability is, you know, is the, you know, the links, you know, the heavy haul network, but also the utilities piece. And a big piece of this is electrification, electrification of the port is going to make it that much more successful economically, in addition to all the environmental pluses that we get from this. So I just wanted to highlight that as the District Seven representative, and it's something that, you know, we have been pushing to ensure the viability of the port. And by, when I say that too, I mean the maritime and fishing industries and the light industrial that supports them as well. So again, thank you, Chair Wu, for this incredible work.
And all the small businesses that are also supported by.
Exactly. And the labor unions that support the, this world as well.
There we go. Okay, seeing no other comments, will the clerk please call the roll on the passage of the bill?
Councilmember Wu?
Yes.
Councilmember Hollingsworth?
Aye.
Councilmember Kettle?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Morales?
Yes.
Councilmember Rivera?
Aye.
Councilmember Saka?
Aye.
Council President Nelson?
Aye.
Eight in favor, none opposed.
Thank you very much. The bill passes and the Chair will sign it. Will the clerk please affix my signature to the legislation on my behalf? All right, there were no items removed from the consent calendar. There's not a resolution for introduction and adoption today. So colleagues, if there is no further business to come before council, I will go ahead and adjourn this meeting. It is, looking right and left, nope, no other business. Okay, it is 3:10, and the July 2nd, 2024 meeting of the City Council is now adjourned.